Hello.
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 Did you enjoy the sun today?
No, I was stuck inside in meetings. Did I go out today? Oh, no, I went to Eggster for coffee. Not so, not so great, not so bad, not so bad. Wait, did you get to ride?
No, I haven't ridden in a while, which is really, really bad.
It's winter. We don't ride in the winter.
Hard. The weather, the ground's never gray, ice, mud.
Month season.
Bill. Can you take yourself off mute by chance? I don't know if you can hear us. Oh, there we go.
Hello.
Hello.
Hi, this is Bill.
Welcome to the planning board.
Thank you. I appreciate it. I'm glad to finally be able to join in.
Good, good. Actually, it is seven o'clock, so we can go ahead and start our meeting for Wednesday, March 16th. Two, um, we have, I'll take a roll. First, Greg Zenser.
Here.
Hershey Hirschkopf.
Here.
Um, Betsy Randall here. Um, Ken Conley.
Here.
Bailey Burnell.
Here.
And Bill Cole.
Here.
And this evening, Manley Gove is not here. So we will have one alternate voting this evening for now. Um, but Bill, just so you know, regardless of how many planning board members there are here, you are always an active member of our conversations and our discussions. Um, but we can only have you vote when we are down people.
Yep, not a problem.
Okay, awesome. Um, so makes a call. We're all here. Approval of previous meeting minutes. Everyone get a chance to look them over? Yeah, yeah. Greg, you're good. Hershey, you're good.
Yep.
I'll take a motion.
Emotionally accept the meeting minutes from March 2nd, 2022. As are, as is. Hmm. It's our second.
Greg, second, any discussion? Hearing none, take a vote. Brad is in sir.
Yes.
Hershey Hirschkopf.
Aye.
Uh, Burnell Bailey.
Aye.
Ken Conley.
Aye.
And Betsy Randall, aye. So the meeting minutes have passed, Amy. Thank you very much. Um, is there anybody here on the public that has something to discuss this evening that's not on the agenda? Hearing none, we will move forward. Um, correspondence. Did everybody receive that correspondence about the solar farm? Burnell, did you receive that? Um, from? Uh, it was solar farm information that came from the Conservation Commission here in South Hurwick. You did. Okay, awesome. Bill, did you receive that?
I did.
Right, and Hershey, I think you received it.
Yep, I got it. I read it.
Thank you so much for initiating that letter. I really appreciate it. Um, the discussion points, but we all, we have a few discussion points, but we also have Christopher Berry here, representing the Amy's Lane application. Um, but I did quickly just want to talk about the agenda because we, it's technically last on the list, but I'd love to move the Amy's Lane and Pleasant Street project up to our first discussion item, or first item to go over. Is that okay with everybody?
Yep.
Okay, cool. So Christopher Berry, I'll let you have the floor.
Where's best to be? Right here, right here. Um, so for the record, my name is Christopher Berry. I'm with Berry Surveying and Engineering and other than the chair and Hershey, I see everybody else is relatively new and so I'll just take five minutes to sort of bring us up to speed on what the project is, what we're proposing, what the board asked us to do last fall. What's that? Uh, I think I got it. I want to get it open here. Um, so the applicants are Amy's Lane LLC. Uh, and I apologize, typically I have a usual, also typically you have it, so sorry about that. So, the applicants developed Amy's Lane in the past. Uh, there are the townhouses that you see on Main Street as you come into the town of South Hurwick over the bridge. Um, and that piece of property also has furnished out on Pleasant Street at the rear of the site. Uh, and what the applicants are looking to do is amend the soils on site, amend their existing site review application uh, to add a single family home at the back of the project site and then work through the subdivision process to create a condominium limited common area uh, around that and a limited common area around the remainder of the site. Uh, we've been through, uh, this is our third uh, meeting with the board uh, under sketch plan review. Uh, and each time the board has asked for a bit more detail uh, so that we can close the sketch plan review and then move to a public hearing. Um, last meeting, uh, what the board asked us to consider was uh, further in the plan set, uh, providing grading on how we're actually going to amend the soils on site. Uh, provide for stabilization and cement erosion control details on how we're going to handle that during construction. Um, there needed to be some revisions at the entrance to our project uh, where a small snow uh, storage and turnaround uh, would be located currently. Uh, the Department of Public Works plows snow right up to the end of Pleasant Street. Uh, we would then extend our driveway off from that and so uh, instead of dumping snow right at our driveway entrance, we would provide an easement to the town uh, to allow for a small area for the truck to be able to plow some snow uh, back up and then leave the project site. Currently, they have to uh, plow to the end of the street and then back up further down Pleasant Street. Uh, we had met with Department of Public Works, the former town manager and uh, the acting municipal engineering company on site uh, to discuss this as well as uh, utility hookups to the Pleasant Street infrastructure in the past. Um, the board also asked for uh, some additional grading detail uh, at the back of the proposed single family structure uh, to ensure that the storm water that comes off from the existing Amy's Lane site uh, is graded around and discharged into the um overland flow and then into the stream and not directly into the rear of the proposed structure. Uh, so they just asked for, the prior board asked for some additional detail uh, with regards to that. So, uh, that's the project in totality and uh, the minor updates of the board asked us to, I'll bring back to them for a final sketch plan review.
Awesome. Thank you so much for that review.
Thank you.
Um, there are a few things, um, and David, are you there?
Yes, I am. Sorry, I was on mute. Yes, I am.
Could you do a screen share for us, um, your memo with the points that we had questions on from our last year, just so we can go over each one of them?
Uh, yes, uh, hold on one second.
So page two of his memo.
I believe so.
So we're completely disregarding the memo that was sent out before. The one that has the date here, April 21st, 2020.
I said, you know, I don't know what time it was after, it's around 2:30.
Right.
Yeah, so that was just an older one. That was the last, yeah.
Okay.
It's good, it's just that it's the last one that we had.
Okay.
Prior to this.
So do you want me to through, move through right in by item?
I'm sure.
Okay, so, uh, the first item, the applicants discussed moving ahead with full design and site review prior uh, post-construction of a single family home. Uh, that was a discussion point that we had with the board. Um, Mr. Berry, myself shared the soil remediation plan and reviewed the areas of soil. Uh, David, I think that's supposed to say remediation.
Remediation, correct.
And so essentially at the last uh, meeting, we discussed the level of soil that we would have to bring into the site um, and the areas of disturbance that would be required for that and how we would stabilize that uh, post-construction.
Can you remind me how large of a spot? I remember, I believe it's six inches.
Yes, so it's six to eight inches, uh, basically in the entire area of the footprint of the front portion of the site. This entire area here. And then, uh, because we're trying to not disturb the 25-foot buffer around the wetlands, uh, we do have a small area on the backside, uh, we would do a temporary crossing. Uh, do the soil remediation there, remove our crossing and then let that revegetate as well.
Okay. And just, uh, in our planning number, plenty of our members haven't seen us before. It's because the soil testing came back poorly draining, and so you're remediating it to?
So it came back somewhat poorly draining and we're adding uh, soil material to that to kick that class up to uh, pre-draining material.
Okay, great, thanks.
I see you said, did I, six inches going down?
Yeah, six, eight inches.
It varies, it varies throughout the site. Yep.
And my, my concern, our last meeting was how to keep that soil from not just going the way of the first rainstorm. And that's where, there, and we'll discuss it, but what is it called? The?
The stabilization, the stabilization and sediment erosion control plan. So the applicant. Yeah.
At one time, looking through some of this interior, at one time, this, there was, there were plans for uh, two similar ones, right?
That's right.
So it's now one.
That's right.
And then if I recall, there was some kind of discussion about whether there's uh, adequate space for another lot there. Am I correct?
So, uh, the, the, we have two different things that have been discussed in the past. Um, I'll reference the first because it was talked about prior. So, uh, there's, there's been a question, David has raised the question of whether or not we want this to be a free standalone lot. We do not. We want this to be a condo subdivision the way we're proposing. So there's that. And then there's the, you have to have a certain amount of soil of a certain class to obtain units on a piece of property in this zone. And so, uh, that we weren't disturbing areas needlessly and so that we could just simply build a single family structure, we've reduced the amount of soil remediation that we're proposing on site.
Is that gate the possibility of another lot or what's, what's gonna happen with all the other remediation?
Uh, it doesn't negate the potential for it in the future, but um, with the applicants are just not choosing to do that now. For, for the applicants to do that in the future, uh, we would need to propose a crossing, a permanent crossing over the brook um, and find a develop, a proper development zone for another house uh, on the other side of the brook. Um, and at that point, at this point, it's not feasible financially for us to do that. Um, that type of crossing is not something that they want to endeavor today.
But with those things, it is still possible for something to be put in there.
Uh, basically, there's enough land mass for one additional unit potentially in the future.
Okay.
I think David raises that as a question in his his letter here, uh, what's the, what is the end goal? Currently, this is the end goal, but as time goes on, things change. Uh, the highest and best total use would be one additional unit. Uh, number three, the applicant explained that since the prior, they had conducted a site walk uh, with Jay, the current Department of Public Works Director, uh, Jay Stevens, who was the municipal uh, review consultant, uh, the DP, DEP Director regarding snow storage. Um, so that was the meeting that I referenced on site, uh, where we talked about how to provide for a small turnaround for, uh, the Department of Public Works essentially. The applicants are willing to allow for a small turnaround. Again, this is sort of a similar discussion in number four. Bill Straub questioned zoning requirements. Bill, um, Bill questioned whether or not, um, he really felt we needed to go across the brook to do the additional remediation uh, in this area. Of course, the applicants would wish not to, but uh, the soil calculations would not then permit the unit, so we do need to go across that area. Uh, and at the time, Bill questioned whether or not that would be a waiver of variance. And I had determined that that would be a variance and that's not something that the applicants are interested in pursuing. Um, and so the site is viable as is from a zoning standpoint. Ms. Randall questioned, uh, the additional five acres of soil that was planned to be installed. And this is where we were asked to do the additional sediment erosion control of both temporary as well as permanent stabilization and planting. Uh, and that, uh, has been added to the remediation plan inside the plan set. Uh, Mr. Straub stated that the discussed items could be reviewed and submitted for the next uh, meeting before a public hearing is scheduled and then preliminary approval could then be approved.
Um, now if you go down, David, yeah. Are those the points? Um. Sorry. Oh, there we go. Talking to the circle. Say it, I see it. Um, now we can't actually see the whole thing because of the Zoom thing. So David, do you mind just reading under that for Pleasant Street access? Number one?
Yes, as, as has been previously discussed, a proposed site plan amendment seeks to gain access to this portion of the property via Pleasant Street, which is, which is an existing, that a road, a dead end roadway owned and maintained by the town. Access at those location is key to this application and with it documentation and details of how this to be achieved, achieve these resolution clarification.
So if I may?
Yep.
I'm getting a little frustrated with hearing that comment from David over and over and over again. We have addressed this with the board, David. We've provided you the prior survey of Pleasant Street. We provided our survey of Pleasant Street and we've addressed how we're dealing with the turnaround. I think this topic is finished.
That's, that's up to the board. Do you, do we, I, do we, does the town have a letter from the roadway commissioner accepting everything that you have told the board about? I don't, I've never seen one.
Then that's, that's something that we can certainly provide to you, but we still.
So then. Okay, so then you have not previously answered my question, so thank you.
So we, we technically don't have any proof of that conversation. Us planning board sitting here, we weren't there. So it would be, I, I don't, I mean, and if anybody else has anything to say on the board regarding this, I would feel more comfortable with a letter in hand that states that it is clear and is okay. Who, who does our roads?
And as such, the town has to have easements that need to be reviewed by the town's attorney for completeness.
Okay. Who does, who's in charge of our roads and approving our roads?
The town manager.
Okay, so, um, can we, let's put this one on pause if everybody, if nobody minds, because I did want to discuss later our site walk and maybe that's something that Tim could do with us. Yeah, and then you can just get his verbal there. Exactly. So if you don't mind, we'll just come back to this later, um, when we get to that, that point. Um, so number two, project name, I did have, I, I did read through these and that one, um, that one is just to clarify what exactly this project is, because we have, I think on our agenda here, it has like three names, but it's not. That one is just to clarify what exactly this project is, because we have, I think on our agenda here, it has like three names, but it's not like Amy's Lane was part of the condo project that went through a couple of years ago. And so if we could just have one name that stands by itself, stands alone, so it's just very clear. That would be great. And you don't have to decide it today, but if you just want to say stating what the project will be called moving forward.
Sure.
That'd be great. Three, Pleasant Street Extension and Maintenance. That's kind of also on the topic of the road commissioner. Correct.
Yeah, so we, we were asked to provide for a turnaround at the end of Pleasant Street and asked to provide for an easement area around that. So we demonstrated that by plan. David's correct in that we would then have to follow up with the legal documentation typically that we, our experience is that's done sort of post-approval prior to the signing of a plan. If that's different here, then we're happy to start working on those documents now.
Okay. I'm gonna, does anybody have anything to say? Go ahead, Chris.
So I think you got, I, probably some more, and so I apologize, but obviously I'm new here coming in on this. So items one and three, you know, I understand what you're saying, I have no problem with the site, but I do agree that we need to get some of this stuff clarified and reduce into writing. And, and how we do that and when we do that, I don't know in terms of, you know, reducing the easements into, you know, a written form so that they can then be recorded. So, you know, I don't, I think that's something that you as a survey can probably start working on at this point in the sense of coming up with the line data and, and the actual layout.
Which, which we've done by plan.
Yeah, I see that, but reducing it into writing, you basically see the, you know, instrument that's going to be recorded is really and is going to be what's needed. And the town ultimately, of course, that we know needs to sign off on that as well.
So the easement only needs to be recorded as part of the final approval. So as long as it's being worked on and at least if the roadway commissioner is, signs off on, on the plan in concept, then that can move forward.
And we just need to see that moving forward in one fashion or another. Sounds like it has. And I think we can see something, you know, in terms of at some point that's going to need to be reduced to writing. So a rough draft would help with that, just to, for purposes of movement. You're gonna have to do it at some point.
Understood.
So the question that I have is, I, I don't know how concerned we should be, but it looks like that turnaround area is pushing right up into the, into that, I guess you call it a wetland area.
Yes.
It, the DEP is very particular when we get into dumping snow. Is that going to be considered a snow dump? And because that's a whole other process that the town would have to go through.
Right.
And that can be a real pain in the butt.
So we have graded that area, though it goes up close to the wetland, we've graded that area so that as that snow is pushed in there, it does not drain off directly right to the wetland. So that snow storage is, area is graded to drain off in a, in a different direction.
Okay.
Um, so number four, well, does anybody else have anything? Brad, Hershey, Bill? Nope, Ken?
Nope, nothing here.
Okay, so point number four is a Pleasant Street tree line. It says during the last review of this project, several issues were raised within my planning board report regarding the existing conditions at the end of Pleasant Street. A, the existing tree line needs to be illustrated on the revised plans. B, plans should clearly illustrate with vegetation as being impacted. And all trees planned for removal should be specified, identified. Minimizing tree removal, particularly larger and healthier trees whenever possible. The plan should also correctly delineate what vegetation is going to be protected in place. Also, the submitted plan sheet three of eight illustrates an error as an existing tree line is shown behind the proposed single family home. So with, with that being said, do you think that you have enough information, Chris, from us that you could show us a revised plan with those changes?
Well, so the, the only, I agree that we needed to, needed to show a proposed tree line behind the structure on the existing site, but the tree line between us and the immediate border to the south is, it's not, it's not like a wooded vegetation, so it's hard to show a tree line there when it's not, when one side is not fully wooded or the other. So if you want us to locate specific trees that are approximately near the boundary line and show those on the plan, we can certainly do that.
Okay, yeah, that'd be great. And again, if, if we do agree to a sidewalk, or should say to the board, a sidewalk would be a great time where we could explore this a little further. Number five, emergency access and snow removal.
To save the applicant revising that plan, you could possibly, if you, if the board does do a sidewalk, just rather than revising the plan, do the sidewalk before they revise any plans and see it and if there's any specific trees, will we think you could tweak something and save something, then the board says mark this tree for preservation and, you know?
Okay. Thank you, David. Um, does that sound like something of you, fine with you in the board? To just wait until you see it on a sidewalk? Regarding vegetation? Or do you want to see it on the plan?
Eventually I'd like to see it on the plan, but I'm finding a little bit of a looking.
Okay, so maybe just go ahead and put it on the plan. Thank you. Emergency access and snow removal.
So we're not going to be able to provide for emergency access turnaround. That's, I'm, you can see the confined space that we have. I think the turnaround that we provided will provide for a level of safety that is increased beyond what's there now. Currently, there is no turnaround. So if an ambulance goes to the end of Pleasant Street now, they're going to have to put it in reverse and reverse down the roadway. In this particular instance, they will likely then be able to turn around in the easement that we're providing to the town for that service. For fire apparatus to get down and back, they're going to have to do that the exact same way that they do that currently. We're not able to provide for fire apparatus to be, apparatus to be turning around in that area, so. We, we've demonstrated that we can provide you thirty, thirty-five to forty feet of additional turnaround space that's not there today.
Okay, um, Joe, what is required?
Based on, based on what's here, we can't alter that to make it what it needs to be. It just ain't gonna happen. You know, and, and it's no different than another long driveway that we have to go up, we have to back down. There's no difference. I mean, and the least amount that you alter on this property is going to be better for everything.
Okay.
So I, I, I wouldn't have any issues with it. Based on that information, I mean, right now, if we get out and have, do any of these houses here that are on the right, left-hand side, we're gonna have to back out.
Right.
Because there's no turnaround now. So it's going to be a little more of an advantage to pull in.
Okay, thank you, Joe.
Yep.
Um, any member comments?
Well, the question, I'm gonna go after Briggs' question here about the snow dump area. And you did say that it was going to be graded such that it is that? Does that then meet the requirements? There's no further requirement from, from the?
We, we would need DEP approval to temporarily cross this anyway. So DEP is already going to be looking at this.
Right, well, that would include the snow dump area, the permanent setup for the snow dump area.
Yes, it would include this set of plans essentially.
Thank you.
Another thing I see here is that we would need perpetual access agreement for the proposed ground turnaround for an instantly.
Yeah, that, that's, that would be included in that easement document.
Okay, wonderful.
Sounds like a lot of these are kind of tied together.
Correct.
And maybe for ease of getting things done, that could start to be, we're not gonna do it all at once.
Sure.
Um, the next point, house sale. The point, as previously outlined in the application, the plans include site elements on the proposed site plan and also the creation of relative common areas. Number one and number two, so allow the sales that proposed past will unhemorrhage and suffer with the proposed single family home is proposed to remain part of the existing parcel of the single family home is being sold to an individual. As was raised previously, the property basically would operate as a single family house lot, and the time is likely the house owner will want a physical pre-standing lot for financials. Do you have any comments?
Nope, this is another one. We've gone over the last two meetings. This form of subdivision is chosen so that we can meet your regulations. There's no way or form of subdivision that would separate this house from the remaining parcel without being a detriment to the rest of the parcel. And so the applicants are choosing this, choosing to do this through a condo subdivision. It's a, it's a, it's a formal subdivision that is permitted.
Sure, can you just give us a couple of examples of how it would be a detriment to the overall parcel?
Well, I'm not so sure that we have enough frontage on Pleasant Street to even properly subdivide this in this, in the zone. So there's that. There's also your minimum lot standards in this zone are greater than your unit density standards in this zone. So if we were to try and create a minimum lot around the single family house, we would be removing land area that is supported or is needed to support the remainder of the Amy's Lane project.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead, Hershey.
So can I, and this must, this is a question for David, I assume, but maybe you could also answer it. Uh, so that means it will never actually become its own lot. Right? It can never be subdivided. It sounds like even if the owner buying it wishes to do that.
That's correct.
So over time, despite what David has written, is that David, you've written this, that will never be true?
That's correct.
Okay.
Any other member comments?
Okay. The, the lot can be sold off by itself, so there, there can be a standard transaction that's sort of like a condo sale because it is tied to the others.
Right, thank you, David.
So that, okay.
Wait, I'm sorry, David, can you say that again?
Yeah, the, the way that it's being proposed is there's sort of overlapping easements. So there is the house being created, the, the lot area that is being sort of created for this lot so they can set, sell it. They are supporting each other. So the, the condo development up top on Main Street is actually using some of this land area. So yes, they can sell them by the house, but no, they can't be split as a freestanding lot.
Right, gotcha.
Okay. And a lot, and a lot of this thing like the house sale, we have previously.
Oh, go ahead. Go ahead, David.
Oh, I was saying that some of these items in here, like the house sale, we've got a new board, you know, I don't, I, I'm trying to pull out as much information in this and the last report that I did to try and, here's where we're at in this, so everyone can vote on it, so. You know, they can, they could do the house sale, we've talked about it before, but that's how it's going to be arranged, so everyone knows.
Thank you, David. Oh, great.
Well, some of my questions are being answered. And so you answered the question, why were you going down the condo subdivision as opposed to the single family? So, so what I heard is you need to go down the condo so that you can meet the zoning requirements for the house in.
Right.
Okay, so that's why it's not being a typical single family zoning approach.
That's right.
All right, so basically we're locking this particular piece of property, even though it's at the owner's request at this point, into a condominium type of arrangement where it's a separate house, separate condos, but it's basically shared land.
That's right.
And they need each other to support the zoning that we're being put, that, that's, that's being put in.
That's correct.
Okay.
Um, and then seven, future development master plan. The long-term development desires, we did kind of address that, but do you want to? But I'll give you a moment to, you know, just explain what the future endeavors are.
So currently, there are no fixed cur, uh, future endeavors. I, my simple explanation is that just because somebody doesn't want to do something today, doesn't mean they're not going to want to do this ten years from now. And so I want to be very clear with the board that we don't have on the backside of our drafting table another unit designs at this point. But that doesn't mean that we couldn't at some point in the future, so. But I think the limiting factor on this site is there's one additional potential unit for the site.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Um, with that, I do think that a site walk would be extremely valuable. Does any, any of your board members think that they would be open to doing that?
I, I don't want to dissuade you from doing a site walk. I'm not sure how the board is going to walk the site, given how thick with invasive species it is. So if you want to walk the Pleasant Street area and maybe portions of the boundary that are adjacent to the southern side of that, that area is probably walkable. And if you dress for it, you could probably walk the remainder of the site, but it's very, very thick specifically with invasive species, so.
Okay.
Uh, that's all even that.
Well, the good news is that a good portion of what we want to see is Pleasant Street.
That's correct.
So Hershey?
Sure, I'd be up for it if you want to have one. I've been over there, so I don't, you know. But, you know, if you want to go, I'm, I'm happy to go.
So, you know, again, I think a lot of this thing is, there's a lot of similarities here between one, three, and five.
Right.
In terms of the ultimate, you know, the, the the recordings of the easements and everything. But Dave does bring up a point here about encroachment of the driveway in point three. Is that something that we can work out or that you could work out ahead of time by getting an agreement in place with the landowner?
So the encroachment, I think David was referring to was a prior set of plans. Before I had nailed down the right of way of Pleasant Street, I had come off square with my road, and so I was technically encroaching on somebody else's property. I've since revised that. I think one of the other comments, correct me if I'm wrong, David, is part of the actual Pleasant Street infrastructure is on somebody else's land. It's nothing to do with us and we would prefer not to get in the middle of that.
Going to be appropriate at the site walk and I would look maybe to go to have the road commissioner there to kind of get some of this stuff worked out all at once when we can just be done with it. You know, it's be the proper use of time to get all the questions answered and done out there and walk away with a verbal agreement that can be then finalized on a plan for ultimate recording.
Sure.
The one thing that I'm concerned about, just in these areas, I shouldn't say this area, I'm really not familiar with it, is the disturbance of soil, has it impacts the residents, the other houses that are there? I see there are two of them. And, you know, even when you start to disturb soil, you know, we started hearing, you know, my basement's flooding or something like that. It wasn't a problem until this project came in. I see some topo on here, I've looked at it, haven't studied it greatly, you know, I'll be honest with you. So when you go disturbing the land, you know, you're, you're, you're grating it out, you're going to put a new soil down. At a certain point, though, that soil becomes re-impacted and, you know, are we, are we, is there, are we satisfied or have you looked at any potential impacts on the downstream for those residents so that we're not going to have to deal with that later on? And with the, 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 the grading of the snow storage area, you know, snow can add up pretty quick and then start sheeting down into other people's yards. And so I just want to make sure that the drainage issue. Number I.
Sure, so sheet two of eight is the remediation plan that we had prepared. And that specifically shows how the material would be added and then a swale would be graded against the boundary line. It's a little obscured from that tree line that I show in there.
The one, the one facing the houses that I'm looking at where it says existing garage.
That's right, yes. There's a swale there that's proposed so that we're not reshaping any lands towards somebody else's structure. And, and then the grading for the snow storage area is on the permanent grading sheet, which is five of eight. And there again, we show grading off the tail end of a little hammerhead that we're proposing into a level spreading device. Hold the tree line back so that snow can be pushed into that area.
Okay. So he would have flexibility.
Yeah, I mean, it'd be more words, but you guys will work through that.
Yeah. Does anybody have a day of the week?
Early mornings work better.
Early mornings, Greg. Uh, I mean, I can do it if I have to.
Would you do it eight? Yeah. Could you guys?
Shoot me.
What did he, did she say?
Earlier the better for me. I'm, I'm.
I mean, I can do eight fifteen. I just have to drive my, I drive my kids off at eight. But I could do eight fifteen.
Right. So I'll talk to Tim and send a meeting.
Okay, awesome. Thank you very much.
Such a formal meeting, so we'd have to advertise it too, correct?
Yeah. Is it, is it a week? I think it's just a week. Okay. Go ahead, Hershey.
For anger.
Oh, you know, it's just one day. I'll, I'll bring you a coffee.
That's your problem.
I'll bring you a coffee, Hershey.
They have to know this. Because it's.
Okay, fine. I might come in my.
For the public, as a public hearing. So they have a notice sidewalk for as a public hearing.
So I, I would say yes, but if, if there's a board member that wants to put a motion on the table to approve for a public hearing, I mean, you can.
Got acceptance sketch plan? To go to a public hearing? I thought the sketch plan was already accepted.
I believe the sketch plan was accepted, but the preliminary plan, which would then put it into a public hearing is not.
Okay.
And so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Across the border, sorry.
So the preliminary plan is approved, which we aren't doing tonight. We still have questions that we need answered. Then we'll go to, we'll be able to do a public hearing, but we're going to do a sidewalk first. And then we'll come back and look at the plan again with all that information and then hopefully then make a decision.
I think the site plan probably resolves some of these issues here. With the layouts and stuff.
Great. Is there any other member comments before we close this?
Any question that would be just. So the goal of this is to, next time we meet, we'll have a site plan done, the sidewalk. Do you want the sidewalk done?
Yeah, if we could, if we could do a sidewalk and have all that information before the next meeting.
Yep.
That would be great. Did you want to be there for that?
Let's see.
Hi, Pat.
Hi. Can I speak now?
Um, yes, you can, you can have a minute.
Okay, I, I'm Pat Robinson from Brattle Street. I'm speaking as Conservation Commission. On the ordinance has been changed that the Conservation Commission should be invited to any sidewalk for subdivision.
Yes.
Yep. So I, I, I'm not quite sure of the process of doing that, but I am here at the meeting, so.
Damn it, damn it. Now they know about it. Shoot.
You are on the list, Pat. So you will get, get a notification.
Okay, yeah. How am I getting that notification? I, I don't know how that was determined.
Email.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
For scheduling purposes, to keep the project going, we're slated to be April sixth. Kind of got the next couple of weeks off. So if we could get this done before, that means the comeback with the final plan.
I'm hoping that we, within the next week.
Yeah.
It'd be nice if you could schedule it for next Thursday or something.
Yeah, yeah. That's what I was kind of.
Because then that's a week.
Yeah.
Yep.
So, so should I, should I make the planner visions that we discussed here this evening? Because I, I also have to get them in a week in advance. So.
You have an extra week in between, it's not to April sixth. So if we can get this site plan, I mean, the sidewalk done by Thursday next week, that gives you plenty of time to get back to us. Yeah. Because we have, yeah, because it's the sixteenth, so that thirty-one, yeah, plenty of time. Worked out actually quite well.
So if we have all the answers in April, we schedule a public hearing? And there's one meeting in April, not two?
Two.
Two? Is a public hearing possible? Is it possible to come in April, call the answer and schedule a public hearing?
I think that's the goal.
That's the goal.
Yes.
I hope so.
Potential.
Yeah, yes, man.
So what is the overall timeline on this project?
Well, you can tell we're a little late.
Been going on for a while.
Well.
So I just wondered what.
Yeah, so it's, it's the.
We have an end user who's ready to go in as soon as possible.
Right.
And they have other concerns and they're trying to line a lot of stuff up. That's why I'm requiring a little timeline a lot. They've been hanging in there and their families that have been there for a long time, who want to fill obligation out.
Thank you guys so much.
All right. Thank you.
And we look forward to the sidewalk.
Have a great night.
Again, I just, I just want to tell you guys, guys, that when we have our video on desks, it's much easier to open our play. Two of our discussion items, we have the study review of the planning board's remote meeting policy amendment, section four oh three B to C through H. Do I have a motion to approve it?
It Greg, go for it.
Uh, well, probably a two-part motion. One would be the motion to dispense with the second reading. And we have to have two formal readings on this stuff. Okay, I don't care. Just, okay, no. I'm not like a bylaw change or something like that. Oh, okay. All right.
Yeah.
No one actually made a motion.
Oh.
Hershey and I kind of interrupted each other.
Oh, oh, oh. Okay. Do I have a motion to accept the new remote participation policy amended July seventh, twenty twenty-one?
I make a motion to accept the new policy amended twenty twenty-one. Public meeting policy. Thank you.
Have a second?
Second.
Discussion?
I move the item three of second paragraph.
Wait, I gotta go look at it.
Oh, yeah. Okay. So when the preference of the individual board member is to attend remotely because of the individual's personal position regarding the status of the COVID nineteen pandemic, including requirements for participants meeting person to be fully immunized. A person who chooses to attend a meeting remotely will notify the chair or presiding officer of the body as far in advance as possible. So remind me if I'm getting this wrong, but it's not necessarily that you care if somebody doesn't want to come because they don't. There's no, okay, I get it. So the way it is written, it kind of sounds like it's required not to be vaccinated, that you have to be vaccinated or it's not. But that's not how it is meant to come off. And so I'm wondering, Amy, is there a way that we can word this better so it doesn't? So it doesn't sound like that? Like if instead it said, or be, what it was stating, I'm sorry, due to a due to the absence of a, a vaccination mandate.
Yes, we can't get into that with that, with mandates. We can't make, we can't make a statement about a mandate because we can't ask somebody to not or to come here if they are or not vaccinated.
So, right. What I'm saying, if it's in their personal partners, because there isn't, there isn't a requirement.
And that's fine. That's what it's saying. That's what it's stating.
I know, but the way, the way it's stating is confusing. People.
Or no, can you just clarify what, what, what your concern is?
Okay, a start, a start would be the complete elimination of the, the sentence after the column. Okay. There's no eliminate, uh, just off the bat to get to, to, to move the conversation forward here. Eliminate including requirements for participate, participants meeting in person to be fully immunized. Okay. And then the continued discussion whether we want to even, want to even do the first part, you know, but the motion stands to, or the motion right now is to eliminate item three. I'm saying that a way to move this forward to explain it is to at least eliminate vaccination requirements, as you say. I hope, I hope this body cannot mandate that. And whether someone has a vaccination is immaterial to other people or whether they know it or not. I mean, you know.
Yeah.
So that's a, that's a, to me is a, would be a purpose, but a one that you couldn't
I guess.
Is not usable.
But Amy.
I don't.
I'm reading it differently, but it's, what it's saying specifically is that if a board member decides they do not want to attend in person, but they want to do it remotely because that individual's personal position outside of being on the planning board regarding the status of COVID nineteen pandemic. That status could be just about anything. It could be that you are vaccinated, it could be that you're not vaccinated. It could be you have a mask on, you don't have a mask on. I believe if you were just to put I E as an example, that's what including requirements for petition, participants meeting in person to be fully immunized is stating. It's, it's more of an example. We're not stating that.
But you, but it does come up saying requirements for participants meeting in person to be fully immunized.
No.
It's not what it's saying. It's not what it's saying. There's like a period. I mean, it's definitely worded differently, but it's not saying, because we keep, we're not allowed to say that. I mean, to start, the attorney went through all of this with a fine tooth comb. Just make sure that we weren't saying, yeah. Do you see what I'm saying?
It seems like it's still saying that.
I have to, I, I have to agree with Amy's reading. First of all, I think the attorney has already gone over it. And as I read it, it means whatever your position is, whether you're immunized or not, you still don't have to attend. Or that if they require it, you don't have to attend, but it doesn't say anybody need, there's nothing in it that says you have to be immunized. Otherwise it would just say that.
We can take that one out.
I don't, I don't think we can take it out. I think we need to, that, I think it has to go back to the attorney if someone has an objection.
Well.
Certainly, I don't think the wording is such, you know, this, this time anyway, that, that, that is a fairly definite statement in there right now.
It's some of the.
Before. It's not a stated on its, on its own. It's attached to the sentence before. So I guess if we were to make it its own statement, then yeah, that would be, you know. Every time I read it, I see that it's just making that as if it's an example.
I, I'm with Amy. I read it the same way.
Okay, I, I, I don't see it like.
So I think. Yeah.
Let's go back to what starts. So there's one, two and three. So one, these six, this is when these are the three following circumstances. These existence of an emergency or urgent issue that requires the board to meet by remote methods. Okay. Two, when an illness or temporary absence of a member causes significant difficulty traveling to a physical meeting location. Everybody's okay with that. And three, when the preference of the individual board member is to attend remotely because of the individual's personal position regarding the status of the COVID nineteen pandemic. That status, what I get out of that is personal position regarding the status of the COVID nineteen pandemic, I E, including requirements for participants, participants meeting in person to be fully immunized. Some people will not go anywhere unless they are a hundred percent know that everybody in that room is that is immunized. And we cannot mandate that here as a new salary. That's what that's stating. That could be Hershey's take on why she's remote right now. But that's her personal preference. You see what I'm saying?
Could I, can I come in here real quick? Just as a comment, I think that the, the word requirements kind of makes that read the way that some of the other folks are interpreting it. I think maybe if it was including whether or not participants are fully immunized would kind of clear that up. I think the word requirements made it seem as if there is a requirement in place for it. So I can kind of see it that way.
Okay. I will certainly. Maybe we've had our discussion. Ken, do you have anything to?
She said this a minute ago, that goes about stating, if some things go without stating, so I say we strike it. I doubt it's about the way that it's written. It seems like that is on deck. So at some point. The wording is purposely, it's so.
So let me ask, let me ask a couple, couple of questions. If, I'll use B as an example and help me understand where you're coming from in the sense of maybe some different words. If I want to stay at home because I have some underlying health condition, I'm concerned about being exposed. I don't know your vaccination status. None of my business. It's whatever, right? So I'm going to choose to participate remote. If we're in agreement, I think that we're not saying, you, you know, if you want to do that, right? I think what we're saying here is go ahead and do that. Is that like one point that we're in agreement on? So if I want to participate remotely because I'm not sure of your status, I'm not going to ask, or do I care? But that is a valid reason for me to stay at home and participate remotely. Is that something that we're in agreement on?
What you just clarified is covered in number two. When an illness or temporary, if you have an illness, if you have a condition, remember we can change illness to condition. Good additions that you were mentioned in number two.
Wow. But that's based on difficulty traveling.
So can I, can I ask then, and thanks Greg, you're right, you're on the right track here. So are what you're saying is that if we choose to stay home because there is no Mac, there's no vaccination mandate, that's not a valid reason to be remote?
As you was, the, the justification you was bringing up was if it, if he had an underlying condition and I, I read illness as condition. So.
So that, that too is the only reason I get to stay remote. Not that I'm afraid of catching COVID because someone hasn't been vaccinated. That, that, you want to strike that because you feel like that's not a valid reason for me to be remote?
Yeah.
Yes? Do we require people to? Sorry, wait, wait. Did I get an, I didn't hear an answer.
Sorry.
You, you didn't hear an answer?
I, I didn't hear an answer. Was that a yes or a no?
I was responding to his concern for if he had a pre-existing condition.
I, I, I asked a question. I asked if, if your concern, do I understand correctly, your concern is that you think people shouldn't be allowed to be remote if they are uncertain of other people's vaccination status? Because they're worried. Do you object to number three in general? Not that it says you're required to be vaccinated, but people shouldn't get to be remote because we have a fear of catching COVID because of other people's vaccination status.
If you have a fear or a condition, or what it may be, that shall be covered under, without the wording that somebody else, you know, down the line might be required to have said thing. That's all. The pre-wording of this, that some said thing may be required at some time. This is not wording that I would like.
So one of the things we, you know, obviously Amy, I think where we're going here is whatever we come up with is going to have to go back to the attorney.
Yeah.
Uh, for review, no matter what, maybe a way to. for review, no matter what, maybe a way to I don't think you're, you know, if this is being interpreted as like a vaccine mandate, then it needs to come out, right? So I think we're all, I think there's some general, there's there's agreement on that. Uh, so I go back to one of you, one of the gentleman over here said, you know, maybe we just stick with the 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 first part, when the preference of the individual board member is to attend remotely because of the individual's personal position, I would add a slash and put in the word circumstances regarding the status of the COVID nineteen pandemic, period. That way you don't go down this road of isn't a mandate or is it not a mandate? You need to be vaccinated in order to be here. I get that, I don't think that's a road that we should be going down. One, because we can't do it. And the council would have to order a mandate, right? That's not within our purview, so it really doesn't belong in here because we don't, we we don't have that authority. But I think if I were to look at that, being respectful of the other individuals that have these concerns, if you say the individual's personal position slash circumstances regarding the status of the COVID nineteen pandemic, to me that that would eliminate that concern about a potential mandate. And and then, but that gives the leeway to the individual to make the determination on their own whether or not they feel comfortable, because maybe they don't want to tell you about the situation that's arrived or some personal circumstance that's their business, right? So and if that's a concern for them, they should have that ability uh, to exercise that judgment and then refrain from coming in and participate remotely. It's cleaner. And eliminates that mandated
Yeah.
feeling.
Okay.
Overall, I I I think I'm right path there. The there is still, I think, clumsy wording here, individual's personal position regarding the status of the COVID nineteen pandemic. Whatever could that that could mean a lot of it. I mean.
But I think.
What is what is the status of the COVID nineteen?
Well, at some point, Burnell, what's going to have to happen is there's going to have to be a reconciliation out there in the sense of when the federal government's declaration expires.
Right, or state.
You know, and the state has, but it's still a federal disaster. And so that expires, you know, July first. And so at some point somewhere.
We might want to put something like that because it's it's a then it's a then it's a actual uh, status or something you can see. It's not, oh, it it's not a nebulous thing, it's a it's a stake in the ground that someone can see. You see, see what I'm saying?
Yeah, I understand what you're saying, I I mean, you know. I I deal a lot with this and you know, I mean, I think we need to be respectful of individual people.
Yeah, I think we.
You know, the mandated language, I think if we just say uh, whatever I said there, the uh, uh, position slash for your circumstances surrounding the COVID nineteen pandemic, I would be okay with that. But as far as putting on an actual date, if we start putting on a date, we don't know frankly what's going to happen a couple, two, three, four weeks, maybe a month down the road.
Right, and I believe you weren't, you weren't talking date, you were talking some status of some or some governing body or whatever, you know.
Now, then you get into what's what governed in body, state or the federal government, then it's how far into the weeds can we go? I I understand what you're saying, I understand, you know, I don't. I think a good compromise right now to get over this would be to, you know, say, personal position slash circumstances regarding the COVID nineteen pandemic, period. Eliminate the rest of the sentence. But keep a member who chooses to attend a meeting will notify the chair. I think that's cleaner.
And the 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 reason behind this remote participation, participation policy was was based off the fact that we were in position we're in and that we needed to have something in writing to state that, you know, somebody's preference. Because of COVID, we have to be honest here, it is what's out there, that could that is that can be. Your circumstances being whatever they are at home, we don't need to know that surrounds COVID somehow.
Sure.
They need to be able to say, you know. So we have a motion on the table, so I just want to go ahead and take that vote.
I will, you're correct, there's a motion on the table. I made the motion, I will revise the motion uh, say just eliminate including requirements for participating meeting in person to be fully immunized. Just strike that part.
And then.
Doesn't the attorney have to re-review it then?
Slash conditions.
After the.
Personal position, we're going to insert.
After the, after the, put a period where it says COVID nineteen pandemic, period.
Yeah.
And then the word position. Would say position slash.
Circumstances. And that's the only difference.
That's it. So then, yeah, it's going to have to go to the attorney because ultimately the attorney gave his blessing on what was before us.
Yeah.
So it's rational rationale that we're unaware of, so.
I'll bring it to Tim with the new wording. But you see what we did? And then I'll have him tell me what he wants to do for you. Okay, so Burnell.
There's something, there's. You were saying something didn't match up with what I'm reading here, so. I was saying after COVID nineteen pandemic.
Period.
There's a comma, change that to a period.
Yep.
Including true immunized.
Correct. And then what I'm.
That's it.
Okay, fair enough, that's right, let me not modify your.
Is where you.
I was going to offer you a friendly amendment if you so choose to accept it. That would be after the word position. You got that word position?
Okay, personal position.
Yeah, I would say personal position slash circumstances. Regarding the quote, the status of the COVID nineteen pandemic, that's so slash circumstances.
That's what, that's what.
Okay. Do I have a second? Any more discussion? Okay, here here now, uh, vote, so Burnell, Bailey. Ken Conley. Betsy Randall, I, Greg Zinser.
Yes.
Hershey Hershkop.
Aye.
That's five. Five ayes, so we will send that to back to the lawyer.
We have to go back.
There's still another, still another motion on the floor, yeah. There's still the motion for the approval of this whole thing on the floor.
Yeah.
Can't do it, we can't do it. Until the.
Okay.
Yeah, which means then we got to do another reading, the first reading, then the second reading.
Yeah.
I think he has a good compromise on that.
Okay. So the next thing on the agenda is the medical marijuana register for your home occupation performance standards. Do you turn update on that? So I reached out to, well, we had, we had decided as a board to reach out to somebody who was an industry expert that could help us understand what appropriate square footage would be. So Calvin Akers has been in front of the board before. He was extremely knowledgeable, we have a, the town has a good relationship with him. And so I reached out to him and he is going to email me, I have not received it yet. I actually, I sent him an email and he asked for clarification. So then I sent him another one, he said he's going to send it back to me this evening, which is obviously not going to be in time for our discussion right now. Um, so that being said, I don't feel like there's really anything for us to do moving forward tonight on that, other than to just say if you do have somebody in particular that you would like us to get a statement from regarding this ordinance and the square footage, I'm happy to take those names and information. I just want to be clear that we need to be an honest in an honest understanding of who this person is, where they live, how they're in the industry and what their relationship is to you. That's all. Um, so that we can just be very transparent, if that makes sense. So are there any questions? Or does that, does every, is everybody okay with us not having a discussion tonight?
Yeah, fine.
Wow, this is wonderful. Oh, you guys just made my night. Uh, no, no, we have solar. I think that's our next discussion item is the planning board charge solar farm ordinance slash performance standards.
If we just go back to the very one thing for one minute, I mean.
Okay, one minute.
Are we all generally okay with what David has given us thus far? I mean, obviously, we're waiting on this for a footage thing, Betsy, you're working with individuals for purposes of getting moving this along, is anybody have, are there any amendments there or suggestions that anybody wants to make today so that we don't have to, you know, come back and then make more changes? Just in terms of the wording that exists, I I read it, I'm okay with it. You know.
It's essentially.
Yeah.
I just want to, that's my belief.
There's no more discussion past.
Yes.
No other discussion.
Want to make sure that we're all the same age with that.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Okay, so solar. Uh, we got a very lovely email from Pat. Um, Hershey, I actually wanted to ask you if you'd like to talk about solar and give this kind of a a demo of what you've learned in your conversations with Pat and from the email. Can't hear you.
Did I unmute? Um, I can't say I've had a lengthy discussion with Pat and I did read the memo, which I thought was well taken um, and very thoughtful. Um, I I'm not sure how to feel about um, how we as a planning board make sort of, I don't know what the word would be, not a moral judgment perhaps, but you know, how we think about I I I don't think, I guess I should say, I don't know if it's either here nor there that large scale are like sort of evil profit making machines. Um, I, of course, am not thrilled with that, but also I don't think that's part of planning. So the scale of it, I think, is what we should worry about. Um, and I certainly would encourage smaller scale and that's sort of partly my takeaway from it. Um, I looked at the Audubon site as well and I found there just wasn't enough information to be helpful to some extent. I mean, it it there clearly are big swaths that are wetlands and um, but it also just didn't have the level of detail I thought it would have to guide us better. So I'm not, I'm not sure where that leaves us in terms of how we do this, and this has been sort of, I think the problem all along is is, you know, I I really think we're down to the point where somebody has to take a fine tooth comb and go over the, how many sight maps do we have, Amy, twenty-two, I think? Is that right? Twenty-two maps of the town with plots on them, right?
Thirty-five.
Thirty-five.
Thirty-five, right, and go over lot by lot, like where things would be impacted um, by large scale development. And how how many and where where are we talking? And I think that takes also a lot, a little more research in terms of you know, um, to get the, what is it, five megawatts they get to? There's a certain, certain number of solar panels and a certain number of, certain amount of land and I just I don't know, I think maybe we need, we need yet again, another industry expert, so.
Or maybe, or maybe a subcommittee?
There's only five of us, what do you mean a subcommittee? All right, I'll be on it.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just thinking, find you going through everything with a fine tooth tooth comb and how how much time I already put in.
You know, um.
I'm not. I just don't have the time.
Right, um, there was a suggestion um, that I know that there are students, planning students available Lee, who do G I S. mapping as part of their schoolwork and often you can get one to volunteer to do something like this, which would be to go over thirty-five maps and, um, you know, highlight and color and, you know, make a a a presentation that says these are these are every site that is eligible for this size or that size or this size. So we'd have a better sense of where they are and what we're talking about and whether there's going to be sort of wide scale impact on the town or not, because it could be, you know, there's, I don't know, maybe twenty lots in the whole town that are affected that large scale solar could go in and we could look at those and say, yes, yes, no, 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 in this area and be done with the whole thing or or not, but I I feel like that's the kind of information we need to have.
Well, if we got that kind of information, we could do things like overlay zones.
Right.
Yeah, or we could just total, it would, you could say, oh, well, it really doesn't even make sense to do in this zone or this zone.
Right. Well, yes, and and clearly like you know, whatever map is Old Mill, for example, or Aggie, there isn't the kind of space and mostly it's wetland too, I think the space there is to clear cut and put in solar at the scale we've been seeing some of these last few projects come in at, right? So that, you know, there's stuff that we know is off the table, but then there's a lot of other places in town it could go and, you know.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, I was, I was going to say, when when we started working on this project, I started writing it as if everything we that we needed to look at, so sort of things that I've encountered before with other projects. And I was, uh, and when I've been rethinking the last few weeks about the ordinance, um, one of the next steps I also thought would be probably going through and see where I've got redundancies that are already covered in, for example, site plan approval, they're going to have to have site plan approval and really cut, cut down the ordinance to real minimum stuff also. But, uh, so, you know, trying to get it a little bit more manageable, we we think we ought to maybe look or the board may want to look at these items and sort of go from there, but any, any uh, free work that you can get to? That's great.
All right, so, you know, uh, one of the things I'm interested in, it's been been entered around from time to time, the overall acreage. You know, I can drive by the place up by New Mam Road and I can drive by when it's saying for big one up in part, I can see these things. I just not sure how how much acreage they encompass, I'm not sure what their megawatt rating is. Uh, you know, there's the 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 commercial aspect, which is the five megawatt, where the developers come in and they then they sell that off and can make money on it. You know, I guess just for purposes of my thinking, I know there a lot depends on the topography and the land and everything, but can we get some acreage estimates for, you know, five megawatts? How many panels does that typically contain and how many acres? And then how many is four megawatts and how many is three? Just for comparison, just what are we talking about? You know, or if we're talking about a community solar project, well, some of those could be just as large as a uh, you know, a large scale solar project, so. I I'm just trying to figure out what are the differences between the two and just for size, what are we talking uh, from a visual perspective, which is kind of along the line what Hershey is saying about these lots? You know, where where could these things go, you know? I just need to be understand that the size and scope of what we're being asked to do, you know?
Greg, uh, I I did provide a lot of information to one of my colleagues at S N P D C who is sort of going to track these for the region. Let me follow up with them and see what she sort of finally pulled together and and see what I can glean from that, maybe?
Yeah, I mean, just anything to help, that's information, really.
Um, did everybody get a chance to read? Oh, sorry, one second, I just wanted, did everybody get a chance to read Pat Robertson's email?
Yeah.
Did you guys get a chance to read it? Okay.
I must be, I'm missing something in the process here, are are we setting ourselves up to try and evaluate the town and sites? Or are we going to evaluate a site that someone brings to us as a proposal?
Well.
It sounds like we're.
So right now, we're we're charged with um, looking at what is an appropriate ordinance regarding these solar farms. And South Berwick is a unique town in that we have we have a lot of environmental things to consider. And so we just want to be really thorough in what we're asking town council to do to create this ordinance. I mean, I don't know how you watch or watch the marijuana stuff, but there's different options we can go down. And by looking map at map by map, like Hershey is saying, you're looking at each zone individually and you can say, hey, like this zone isn't going to work. And so we can say, when we, when we create um, the tape, when we look at the table, we have to say yes or no to every single zone. So we can look at map by map, see every single zone, and we could just say, no, this is not where we would want it. This is not where we would. This is not where we would want it, because we're gonna have to go to our table and say which ones we wanted it. If that makes sense. And it could be all yes and it could be all no. But I mean, I think generally speaking, everybody is on the yes path, but with restrictions. And it's our job to kind of come up with what restrictions those are. Does that make sense?
And currently, there's a moratorium on any project that comes before us until we sort that out.
So that, so that is a stipulation then there that we have, that we review all this ahead of time?
So right now, nobody can, nobody can submit an application for a solar farm. Town council said, pause, we need to figure out what is the best plan for solar farms in our, in our town. Um, and so we need to figure out, um, you know, what's gonna be best for the town? And who is gonna be able to apply, basically? You know, there, so we're, we may say that um, R1, residential one zone, that's a no-go for commercial solar. And that, that makes sense to not do it there. But then you have these ones that are, you know, R5 and that are way out there, all this land. Um, but is it land that having solar farm on is gonna be a good thing or is it gonna have a negative living pack?
You gotta wait, because the R5 is like the conservation area of town. Does it make sense to, here, got twenty acres to put it in, is that against the zoning and against the conflict? So kind of as a backup or background, it really kind of came about uh, from a couple of different people that came in that. There was a time when this board was quick uh, by a lot of proposals coming in. It was like two or three or four that came in really in almost a bunch of order. Uh, that would have recommended the clearing of the acreage, right? I think one was right over by Powder House Hill. And the other one was somewhere down more in the industrial zone area, Fife Lane, I think. Uh, I believe, but I can't quite remember. And so it caught a lot of people up.
It was, it was behind the marsh where ninety-one comes out to two thirty-six between Fife and Old, but it wasn't on the industrial side, it was on the other side.
Caught a lot of people off guard. People came out, talked about it, what was going on, you know? My, all my vision, my view, all this stuff is gonna be ripped up when I'm on Powder House Hill. It's gonna be all different. So that's, that precipitated the moratorium being put in place. And the council saying, all right, you have some time to work it out. Give it to the planning board, come up with some ideas and suggestions in ordinance language to restrict or to guide the growth of these particular developments. That's why I'm interested in, you know, how big are these things, you know? That, that, that's kind of really what I'm interested in, what's, and just having like days, just having some of that base information will help me understand from a visual perspective what we're talking about, you know?
Five megawatts roughly. I, I have smaller home ones and I just offered five thousand watts worth of panels today for system work. And I just did the math out. So it's roughly four hundred thousand square feet of panel space. Obviously, going way around taking, oh, a panel space.
Um, I had, knowing that, read Pat's um, letter. When I was looking at it, when I was finished reading it. You asked Steve to move and some, oh, yeah. Steve, can you? Okay, great.
So, you know, an interesting little thing, I'd like to go look at this, the week, so on an individual basis. You know, there's a, there is one development going in out of Junction Road right now. Uh, Joe was just telling me that some of the prior applications came in. I'm not sure the size, the two, but they were twenty-three acres.
Roughly twenty-three acres apiece.
And so, do you know what the megawatt for that?
I think it was five.
Yeah.
I, I think five is, it's some standard that you, it's either a minimum or a maximum that CMP will deal with, so.
You gotta get the megawatt hookup and then that's when it becomes commercially viable. So that was five megawatts, twenty-three acres. All right, I'll, I'm, I'm gonna go look just for myself, I just to kind of get a little.
I mean, I, when I read Pat's letter, I definitely felt like when I was reading it, I was like, I don't, I personally don't think I want commercial solar at all. Like I would be down for community solar, but I don't, I don't know, I just read it and I felt like a commercial solar.
Sure. So along with that though, the question becomes, when, when, again, that, that continuum, when does community solar become commercial solar? So if you want to go that road, is community solar three watts, three megawatts and less? That, I guess then, is there a cutoff? I just don't know. You know what I'm saying? So I mean, in this letter was.
Well, we can decide that with definitions.
Oh. You're absolutely correct, but, but I, I would like to know what.
Yeah.
You know, so if you don't want commercial, maybe I'll agree with you, but what does that mean for the community aspect?
Right. So I guess from the letter, um, so commercial, commercial solar, I guess, is the net metering laws in Maine encourage intense commercial scale solar development, not seen in other states. I mean, I'd love to know, and I guess this is something that David could do research on, I'd love to know, yeah, what kind of language we can use in definitions to differentiate that commercial versus community in, in a way that, you know, it benefits members of the community, like a community solar? I am, I'm at a point where I don't know if I, and that again is can you, a large, larger scale community solar. Because it's for the people of South Berwick, if that makes sense.
Right, but again, is, are we, if we're gonna do five megawatts, you know, is it okay to do a five megawatt commercial? But, or we're a five megawatt community, but not a five megawatt commercial?
I know.
It's, it's all, you know, it's the same thing. So that's why I'm, I'm really just curious, are there, you know, interstate domain community means this? And I doubt, doubt it, but is there a definition out there that tells us what, what is a viable community solar option? You know, some, someone out there, these things already exist. I guess we just gotta find it and figure out what that magic number is. And then decide as a group whether or not we think that's appropriate or too high or too low.
David, do you have any examples from other towns? I think you sent them actually.
Yes, I, I, I will gather the information that I have. Uh, and then I'll, I'll also look into sort of the, the, the personal solar and the commercial solar and see if I can get some kind of breakdown on that and it, whatever I can find, I'll send it to the board. I have some of the information myself, but like I said, I handed it around to one of my colleagues to sort of organize it, because we were seeing so many solar, so I'll, I'll, I'll get that stuff for you.
Yeah, I mean, this one line, like, under in Pat's email that um, she states a commercial solar profits, profits generated benefits developers, not local residents of the community. I don't know exactly how like that, the business side of it goes. Like, I don't know if that's based on size or just business structure. So I don't know, can we make definitions based on business structure?
Well, usually, you know, when you're talking about, uh, you shouldn't say that it doesn't benefit the local folks, because a lot of organizations take part in the large scale stuff. And benefit through the renewable energy credits that are generated off of this. And depending on the agencies that belong to those, can be a revenue, trip its way down for budgets, taxes, that kind of stuff. The other thing is, a lot of times those developers seek people to be part of their accounting structure. And what that means is then when the credits come in, they also share. That's how the developers make the money. Is they capture part of the credit, but give the business entity part of the, part of the credit as well. So the sharing of the credits that happen, that's, it's the, the net energy billing credit. So there's two things, the net energy bill and credit, that is typically in the commercial scale divided between a business and the developer. And then the renewable energy credits that are collected as an offshoot to the green energy production. Those can then be sold for a revenue. So there's multiple things to it. And so, so you shouldn't say that.
Yeah.
So you gotta watch out, because a lot of governments take part in the commercial scale operations. And uh, that is very, very, very frequent. Uh, so you gotta kind of be careful, you don't wanna cut your legs off.
Hershey?
I, I, I'm not sure really it's our role to um, sort of go down this road about what's profitable or not profitable, or I think we should be looking at things that really are part of zoning, which is scale, size. You know, and I get the community benefit part of it, and I, I think there should be carve-outs then if there's this sort of bigger community benefit, but don't forget large scale solar, whether they're greedy jerks or not. You know, we need solar power and it's renewable energy and that's good for everybody. So, you know, I, I don't think that's really our job and I don't really think we're supposed to wade into that, but I, I could be wrong.
I hear you.
Yeah, and you know, let me disqualify that by saying, I'm a socialist. If anybody's against these greedy capitalists, it's me, so, you know?
So um, actually, Joe, uh, you, you want to speak for a moment?
Uh, yeah, okay, thank you. I was just gonna offer you that I, I did a bit of quick research and a minimum size of a five megawatt solar farm is about twenty acres. And, and I, and I think part of the difference between a um, community solar and a commercial solar is the ownership structure. Community solar is kind of a condominium organization, not a private business ownership. It's like the people who are benefiting are the owners.
Thank you, Joe. Very helpful.
Can you grow marijuana underneath it though? Sorry.
It might be warm.
Enough to kind of get going on this. Um, I feel like uh, after this discussion, discussion that I, I at least would like some time to think about everything that was discussed. And if David, you can get back to us on, on the points that we, you know, that we made, that would be awesome.
You got it.
Yes, Amy. The moratorium does end, uh, the first grant ends on uh, the twenty-ninth of March, but it's been extended. They've already gone through the entire process. So we have until the end of September.
Yay.
Thank you, Amy.
The best. Any member comments? Oh my goodness, it's, it's before nine o'clock. No member comments. Bill, do you have anything to say?
No, nothing, nothing to add, but I appreciate being looped in on the, the whole process and I look forward to getting more involved down the road.
We're glad to have you.
Thanks, Bill.
You opened it up a little bit to comments on the other thing we had there so far. On the draft ordinance. There's a section, give me a second here. It's decommissioning essentially of those things. What happens if, when they are abandoned and things like that? And I wonder if there are specific requirements that we have. There is a requirement to make a plan for it. But what requirements does that plan have to meet?
It's part of the final, and it has to be agreed that that's gonna be set aside in a fiscal account.
Okay, but is, are there, are there specific requirements that they have to meet? In other words, it has to be brought back to some kind of state before.
Well.
Is that spelled out someplace?
Yeah, yeah, it's all spelled out in um, the previous two that were, read to. And it's every year, they have to, they have to factor in, you know, cost, cost upgrades and everything.
Right.
And have to go through that, you know, on a regular basis.
And I can send that to you. We have a final with bats for Junction Road, because it was completely under some proof. You don't for any of the solar, but I can get that to you.
Okay.
To everybody.
Yeah.
Actually, it's right on the, on the website.
Yeah, true.
Yeah, everything's on the website.
You know, and, and I, can I just add one more thing, Betsy? One more thing I think that makes this really dicey is that there are times when I've heard people like refer to forest as sort of junk forest. Um, that always sounds like a great place to put solar, but then there are places that have, without having a forest or um, really evaluate a piece of land. It's, it's, there's so many different ways to evaluate it in terms of what it brings, whether it's, you know, a pass-through for, you know, the spotted salamander or whether it's, you know, just, it would, um, it would break up contiguous land that animals are using for, you know, as pathways. I just, there's so many ways to look at the land before you decide it's fit for solar, that it's that kind of detail, I think, that we need to get down to. So and I know that um, the memo from Pat at all raised that and there are a lot of links there to still look at, so. I encourage everybody to do more research on their own about this. As a, as a birder myself, so.
Maybe you guys get the MMA magazine here? There was, yeah, there was a good article on solar.
Yeah, MMA, where you can go in there anytime, we'll leave up on our stuff. I think, right, anybody can.
No.
I'll look into it, but yeah, I get, I get their updates and like, I get some old things that are not.
I think it was from like the February. I don't know how I got it, I don't get it. But if you have it, I think it was, you were, you like scan it and you know it?
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah, that was just, it was a good, interesting article.
That would be, any, anything anybody wants to share would be really helpful and I, I will spend some time collecting stuff too. Maybe Pat, you and I could talk.
Awesome. Great. Yeah, yeah.
A move we adjourned.
You can second it? I'll second it. A discussion? I'll take a vote. Greg's answer?
Yeah.
Your shot?
I. Good job, Betsy. Thank you. Thank you, Amy. And David.
Oh, Hershey.